Well, good afternoon, everybody. I hope you can all hear me. Welcome to the virtual meeting of today's Health and Wellbeing Board Meeting today. It's livestreamed on the council's website. Let's hope we can make progress on it and let's hope the technology lasts out. So forgive me for the start because I hadn't put my phone on mute. It's now done. Okay, we've received apologies from Steve Reddy and Gideon Bentovam. Peter, are there any other apologies?
No chair, that's all for now, thank you.
Okay, any declarations of interest from anybody? Okay, on the back of your pack, the agenda pack one to five is the minutes of the last meeting. Are there any accuracy issues or anything arising out of that board meeting anyone wants to raise? Jane?
Or Chair? Just on page four of the minutes, I think that's right, yeah. Where we were talking about collectively pressurising the government to put on a series of short-term measures such as raising the levels of child benefits to make a real difference to helping those in need. I thought we could pick that back up again and add in quite a lot of stuff, including a bedroom tax so that they didn't... Anything over two bedrooms and above bedroom tax, fair enough, except it's not fair enough, it should be removed. But actually, I think we could probably get away with them saying one bedroom only, that everybody should be able to have a spare because that links up with self-isolating, it links up with homeworking, it links up with children and young people as well having space in their home to be able to work, just a thought.
Okay, okay, well, that can, I'm sure, be added. I think at the end of the day, there's no issues with the accuracy of it. So can we agree the minutes then, please? Okay, we've received a large number of questions over the last few days from the public and from the TUC. And responses have been sourced because they were late in for many of the questions. We'll answer them as soon as possible. So all of this information has been published as supplementary paperwork. And this will go on the council's website, so it will be updated as further answers are received from the people that we've submitted the questions to. Apologise for that, but they were late in. Okay, before we go on to the main agenda, there are a number of items around, obviously, the impact of Covid. And I just want to do two things. First, to thank you all for the work that you've been doing during this time. It's been, you know, once in a hundred years, I think, issue pandemic that we didn't ever envisage we'd have to face. It's been quite scary and frightening. And there are many of you that have gone, you know, the extra mile. In fact, I think every single one of you have. And it's great to be part of that team, working alongside you, working with you. And you've done an amazing job. And I think we've not only led the way, but we're continuing to protect the city as much as we can. So I just, you know, I just want to, as Mayor of Liverpool, say to you, thank you so much for all your efforts and what you've done and how you've sacrificed your time to give that commitment to others. And that's from everybody, you know, across the piece, working in the health sector, the clinical commission and groups, the NHS, all our voluntary sector, you know, our councillors who've been the links for community groups, the voluntary sector, all of those people that have volunteered, all the city council staff that have done amazingly well to support you as well and to support our community. So I just want to put that on record and thank you so much for everything that you do. When we spoke in the town hall before lockdown, you know, we didn't imagine that it would be as bad as it has been. And as I said, we've got to make sure that not only that we do we thank and praise people, but we learn from some of the things, from some of the approaches that we've had and we change them for the better if it's necessary to do so. And, you know, for me, what we're seeing in relation to a spike in Princess Park means that we have to be vigilant, we have to be on the front foot, we have to be able and ready to respond. And I do feel that we will be, you know, not in anywhere near the position that people imagine we will be. I think we've got some serious, you know, obstacles to face in the near future. So, you know, let's be on the front foot, let's be vigilant, let's be careful, let's keep doing the things that we do. But as I said, from me, just thank you so much. Okay, as I said, before we go on to the agenda...
Before you move on, could I just very briefly support what you just said from opposition parties here? I've been a councillor for a long, long time and I do national stuff as well. And I must say that the work that's being done by the City of Liverpool, all of us, the politicians, the officers of the council, the big men who kept going in very difficult circumstances, the NHS, the voluntary sector, the way that everyone has worked together is absolutely exemplary. And there will come a time, and it's not yet, but there will come a time when we need to think how publicly we say thank you to all the heroes of Liverpool, because there are thousands of them. But in the short term, I just wanted to say you speak for everyone when you pass on that vote of thanks to everyone associated with the effort.
Yeah, thanks for them comments, Richard. I really appreciate them. And equally, I think it's also important to recognise that I think you've been not only supportive, but you've been an ally who I've been able to count on as well. So I appreciate your support during this time. And as I said, it shows that when we work together, you know, nothing is not possible in terms of, especially when we're faced with the challenges that we face. So thank you as well for that. So, Richard, you've paused. I don't know whether anybody is having difficulty with me? Is it me that's paused and it's not Richard?
You're fine, Joe.
Okay, well, it's Richard that's paused. And thank you for that vote of confidence, Tony, in telling me that I'm fine. I appreciate it. Okay, well, Richard, we might get back or whoever else has lost. But if everybody else can hear me, one of the things, of course, that has arisen over the last couple of months has been the issue of the Black Lives Matter movement and after the death of George Floyd. And I think, you know, we are, I think, in a really strong position, not just in the UK, but across the world in terms of addressing the issue of the inequality that exists for Black and BAME communities across the world, the developed world in terms of, we know the BAME communities, Black communities face challenges in many different countries and cities. But in terms of the developed countries where there is clearly inequalities taking place, I think the Black Lives Matter movements have highlighted the need for us all to do much more. Now, we were having conversations with the Black community about how we address the history of our city and what we needed to do to address that. But I was, well, not really, you know, sort of concerned too much about that, although I do think we need to address those and educate people more on the history of our city, warts and all. But I was more interested in trying to do something around the challenges that we faced in terms of inequality in the city. And I make no apologies for saying that our city does have real issues in terms of, with many institutions, about how we treat the Black and BAME communities here in Liverpool. And so I wanted to, did we do things like, you know, we had a report that I set up, which Claire Dove did, which we haven't really moved on and I've apologised for that. But I wanted to make sure that we actually looked at the issues facing us and really examined them with a conscience as well. And so I want to change the way we operate, not just as a city council, but across the piece in education, in business, in our public sector in terms of the police, the fire brigade, right across the piece, challenge education to recruit more Black teachers, challenge education to make sure that we talk about our history. So I'm delighted to say that I offered the appointment to Tracy Gore, who is Chief Executive of Steve Beako House. And Tracy, I know, is known to many of you, but also to, you know, politicians like Richard and others for the amazing work that she's done over the years. And I'm delighted that she's accepted my invitation to chair the task group that's going to look at and produce, not just produce information, but produce action plans and produce a strategy and a roadmap on how we can improve things. Tracy is somebody that's not afraid to speak the truth to power. And she's objective, she's passionate, she takes no prisoners, she's in no one's pocket, and she'll continue to make sure that we do the right thing. So Tracy is going to just make a couple of comments, I think, on Covid and in particular the relation to the BAME community and the impact that that's having. But I think it's also a good opportunity for Tracy to introduce herself and say a few words around what she hopes to achieve. Tracy, you can unmute yourself and...
Sorry, I tend to do that all the time. Sorry about that. Thanks, Joe. Thanks for the, well, a number of things, I guess. Thanks for setting up the task force and for inviting me to be on the task force. And thank you for inviting me to this Health and Wellbeing Board. In respect of my role and going forward, you're right, it's a big challenge. For me, it's not just about city council, it's about all spheres of life for the BME, Black and other minority people within this city and how they engage with all spheres of life and where they have access to things or are denied access to it. So we'll be looking at all of that. It's still very early days. I've been announced and not yet started the job proper. And I'll be working over the next few weeks in terms of appointing the rest of the task force members and starting to move forward in terms of the terms of reference and getting stuck in really into the work and the job at hand. In respect of Covid-19, I guess there's a couple of things. I did want to speak to the report and I'm only available until 1.30 because I'm talking at the launch of the hate crime strategy. So I can only stay till 1.30. So hopefully I'm here for that. But just from, I guess, a personal point of view, you just mentioned around Princess Park and there's a spike now in the Princess Park area. Obviously, Princess Park has a high number of BME people within that ward. And I speak from personal experience of Covid-19. I have a really, really close friend of mine who worked on the frontline in the health service in the Royal Hospital, who contracted Covid-19, was nearly four weeks on a ventilator. Fortunately, you know, she survived and came round from that. But her father, who was 89, who lived with her, contracted Covid-19 because obviously the daughter was there. And he unfortunately died. So Covid-19 is real for me and it's real for the community. I know it's real for everybody, but it's actually up close and personal and I've seen how Covid-19 impacts on the BME community. So I've been through, I know there's reports on the agenda today, I have been through those reports. And if I'm able to, I would like to comment on the report, but when you take them as an agenda item.
Okay, well, we'll see how we get on, Trace. But if there is any comments that you wish to make prior to you having to leave, if we're still proceeding then, then clearly, you know, just indicate and you can come in before you leave. No problem. I think, don't forget, people, please, if you, I'm looking at the hands up and I'm trying to see how many there are with the hands up. And if you just bear with me while I try to find that, because I know there's people that wish to speak. But I don't know whether, Peter, you can see them, but I can't. I can see there's 10 plus hands. So there are indications of 10 people wishing to speak, but on my screen in front of me, I can't see that.
I think councillor Brant had his hand up.
Well, he often leaves his hand up, so councillor Brant, then, while I'm trying to work this out, do you want to go first?
Thank you, very much, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to welcome Tracy Gore on as appointment. I think I first met Tracy when I didn't have any grey hair, it was that long ago. So I know that she will bring all the right skills needed to conduct this task. And on behalf of the public health path of the council, we pledge to make sure we work cooperatively and give you all the support that you need to fulfil your task in a Covid environment. I'll restrain comments in relation to the 5D report until we get to it, but later on. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Paul. I mean, obviously, I can't see, you know, there are six people now with the hands up. So, and so, whoever, please go next. If you've got your hand up, just unmute yourself and speak. Okay, that's not like people I know who's joined here to be shy. Okay, well, look, because I can't work that out and I'm sure lots of you are especially sending your best wishes to Tracy and also offering your support and help to her as well. So let's move on then to item five on our agenda, which is the impact of Covid in Liverpool. And there's the epidemiology report. And that's on page six to 12 of your agenda. And I'm going to ask Matt Ashton, obviously, Matt's our public director, or, you know, public health director. So, Matt, do you want to take us through that report, please? Matt, can you hear us? We can hear you. Now, Matt, can you hear us? You were speaking to the first item, which is the epidemiology report. Can you hear me, Matt?
Matt, if you want to come up to the sixth floor, to the room we're up here, you can come and join the meeting from here. Let me turn my headset on. Can you hear me now? And if not, I'll come up to the...
Yeah, we could, but we couldn't before. We could hear you, we couldn't hear you before, we can now.
Okay, apologies for that, Mayor. I'll be brief, just in case there are connection issues where I am. So the purpose of this report is to inform the Health and Wellbeing Board of the current epidemiology relating to Covid-19. There's, all the latest information is in the report and my intention is to keep the health and wellbeing updated as the information develops. But what I'd like to do is just draw out a small number of key issues from the report, if that's okay. So starting with the epidemic curve itself on page seven, members aboard will note the shape of the curve and the fact that our cumulative infection rate was significantly higher than the England average and the third highest among the core cities. Thankfully, the rate has come all the way down the other side now, which is a good thing. But as you've already said, Mayor, we have seen small increases in cases in different parts of the city. And as we see those increases, we respond to them proactively and preventively as quickly as possible. So we've seen small increases in the Chilwell-Woolton area and also in the Belvaile area and most recently, just this week, in the Princess Park area. And we have responded and will continue to respond to those as they arise. In terms of the demographic information, the vast majority of cases, as you can see on page eight, have been in the older age groups. But most recently, we are seeing more younger people with cases come through. And then in terms of mortality, which is the data on page nine, the data up to the 19th of July shows that very sadly, 468 people died in Liverpool hospitals up until that date. There were deaths outside of hospital as well. If you look at our overall aged standardised mortality rate, you can see that Liverpool has been particularly badly hit in terms of deaths from Covid. The final points around place of death, we can see that 573 total deaths up until the 3rd of July, where Covid-19 was the confirmed or suspected cause of death. Two thirds of those deaths were in hospital, which was slightly higher than the England figure. And on the, on page 11, on the following page, deaths in care homes have accounted for a quarter of Covid-19 related deaths, which is significantly lower than the England figure and I think represents the incredibly strong partnership working that has happened around protecting our care homes and protecting our residents within care homes. Ethnicity information is not systematically recorded for people testing positive for Covid-19, so we do not have a full picture around ethnicity. More recently, that information has started to flow through to us, so we are getting some data, but not all of the data. And one of the recommendations of the report, as you would expect to see, is that we continue to work with our national and regional partners to improve the quality and the timeliness of the data that comes through to us to allow us to respond effectively at a local level. And Chair, finally, Mayor, sorry, finally, I'm just going to highlight the bottom of page 11, which is the underlying health conditions amongst severe cases. And you can see that CBD, respiratory disease, diabetes, hypertension and cancer all contributed, all contributory factors to Covid-19 deaths. And I think there's a message in there for all of us about the importance of health and wellbeing in our population and how important it is to protect our vulnerable populations from events like Covid-19 and anything else that happens in the future. Chair, I'm going to stop there for this report. Thank you.
Okay, now, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Matt, for that report. And the sound was okay there. Can I, again, Peter, I don't know where, oh, right, I can see now some people that have raised their hands. Okay, Tracy, you've got your hand up, then I've got David and Barry also, and I'll go through that list.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, a couple of comments on the report. On ethnicity, we talk about not being able to record the deaths on death certificates. And I understand that that is a kind of national issue. But is there a way that Liverpool can actually start to test and be a trailblazer in terms of recording? Is that something that we could look at in terms of recording the deaths by ethnicity? And secondly, again, in respect of ethnicity, there is a call beyond the data, understanding the impact of Covid-19 on BAME communities. And just wondering, Matt, are you aware of that document? And are you taking that into account in respect of pulling together your report, the disproportionate impact on BAME people? And I guess also, in that report, you talk around the analysis showing that there's 95.2% of Liverpool which died. And of that, we can take that, there's about 8% from the BAME community. That, I'm assuming, is 8% from the figure of 12% of the BAME community in Liverpool and using 12% as that figure. So 8% of 12% is still a significantly high proportion of BAME people who've been affected. And so I just think that we just kind of need to ensure that we're drawing that out. So just finally, we talk about inequality on number seven. You talked about equality implications and impacts. And is there any intention of carrying out equality impact assessment on this report and on Covid-19? Thank you.
Okay, Matt, do you want to respond to them, please?
Yeah, best I can, Mayor. Thank you very much. So you're actually right about national issues of recording ethnicity data on death certification and the timeliness of that. That tends to get resolved later on, which isn't great when you're trying to manage a situation locally. So absolutely acknowledge that it's a national issue. We have been working with the CCG, probably with our CCG colleagues and with our health service colleagues from Liverpool University Trust to try and get that data more timely. And that's where some of that information in the report comes through. So yes, we are, but there's more to do on it. Specific issues around BAME, I think, is being covered later on in the agenda. So it might be, there might be a question that comes out of that there, Trace, including the kind of the impact assessments and the recommendations for next steps there.
Okay, Claire, if there's anything that, if there's anything that Matt hasn't really picked up, if you want to either email me or email Matt direct, then we'll make sure that we then get those answers to you. So, but I think, I hope we Matt addressed some of those issues, but there needs to be a little bit more. I'm going to move on to some of the hands that are raised at the minute that I can see. So please, if you have spoke, then take your hand down. But I've got, Peter said, and you had your hand up, Peter, is that anything that you...
What that is, Chair, is when either councillor Kemp or councillor Club want to speak, because they're sitting at tables, they can't raise their hands, so I don't know...
Right, okay, so, okay, well, I'm going to take then, Richard, and then Jane. So go for it, Richard.
Thank you, Chair. So four quick questions for Matt. One is about asymptomatic young people. You've already raised Chilwell-Woolton, where there was an uptick in young people there. But the evidence seems to be coming in globally that asymptomatic young people going back into their families and are now not killing themselves, but they're killing the older people in their families. Have we got any evidence of that in Liverpool? And what do we need to do to target that? The second question is about excess deaths. We know that for the first two, three, perhaps four months, excess deaths were above what we would expect them to be. But nationally, excess deaths are now below the average, presumably, because some people died a little earlier than they otherwise would. What's happening in Liverpool about excess deaths? We will come to ethnicity later, but I don't know whether Tracy and I are using different figures, because I think this shows that with 95%, 95.2% of the known deaths being from white people, the ethnicity rate in Liverpool is far more than 4.8%. So is it just that we don't know? Or is it because we're way behind Blackburn, Oldham and anywhere else, which I would find surprising? But the figures don't seem to match up to what's happening elsewhere. And the last one is the link with obesity. So 17% die in comorbidity, comorbidity, in diabetes too, which is almost always called by obesity. How are you, on behalf of the council and the health service, gearing up to the Boris Johnson challenges to tackle this issue? Thank you, Chair.
Matt, do you want to respond?
Yeah, thank you. So, thank you councillor Kemp. I agree absolutely certain that we have got asymptomatic transmission... transmission of the virus from children, young people into our older populations, and that is a key concern for us. That was borne out in my mind in what happened in in South Liverpool. And although it's very early days, that appears to be what is happening in Princess Park, which we will have more information on and in the coming weeks. And the way to address that obviously is to make sure that we have um, context-relevant messages to our younger population. So that isn't necessarily the director of public health talking on these issues, but peers talking about why this is important and the fact that this is not just about risk to themselves, it is about risk, onward risk to their mums, dads, nan's, grandads, aunties, uncles, other loved ones, et cetera. So I absolutely agree with that assertion. The excess deaths picture that you've described nationally is similar to what we've seen recently. And so that is that we have had a period of high excess deaths and we now are not having that. But and like with all things like this, we need to have a full look back exercise at the end of the pandemic so that we can fully understand the numbers. You will understand, councillor, that there are lag factors in death, in death data as well. And we need to look at all the data together once we're not actually responding to to all those situations. Your analysis of ethnicity is equally my analysis of ethnicity. But what it's what that report says is out of the available ethnicity information, the split is ninety-five point two for for whites and therefore four point eight percent for non-whites. And again, this speaks back to the data quality issue where we need to keep an eye on the data quality and work locally to improve the flow of that information as well as with our national partners. And then the final point around obesity, well, you're actually right, it's very early days. But the council's already committed to a number of actions around the healthy weight and gender, including our pop-up cycle paths. For example, we have a number of campaigns that are due to run over the summer months. Uh, for example, this this girl cam and we are undefeatable, which are physical activity promotion, health promotion campaigns. I think we have more to do in this space, though. My personal belief on this is healthy weight is energy in, energy out. And energy out is around twenty percent of the problem, so that's the physical activity side. Energy in is around eighty percent of the problem. So we have to do much more around healthy eating, healthy diet, healthy food environment in our communities. Physical activity is incredibly important, but it's not the sole answer there. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, so thank you for those responses, Matt. Um, so if you can you say, I'm going to say Jane.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Mayor. And Trace, just on the back of what Tracy said before about the equality impact assessment. And can we make sure as well that we include and the low income communities, low income families and low income individuals? And because obviously within Equality, the Equality Act, uh, section one hasn't been enacted, so that's that's outside of that. Although we we continue to collect that in Liverpool and that will be really important because it will overlap, particularly in some of the BAME communities. And so it'd be good to be able to see that that correlation there. Thanks.
Matt?
Chair, my my suggestion is we continue to bring reports back to the Health and Wellbeing Board describing the epidemiology of the pandemic. And that incorporates both the elements that that have been asked of there. So the equality impact assessments around ethnicity and around income deprivation. We will continue to do that analysis. It it and we won't have the full picture yet, so we need to keep on ongoing as an ongoing piece of work.
Okay, okay, okay. Uh, look, I'm going to now bring in Martin, Martin Farron. Uh, and then um, David Taylor-Robinson and then Barry Kushner. So, Martin?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that where Matt has highlighted the issues around inequalities and the impact on different groups. One of the key groups that was maybe initially missed was those with disabilities and a very disproportionate impact on those with disabilities, particularly those with a learning disability. Fortunately for us in the UK, the impact hasn't been as great as in some of the other countries in Europe that saw a four or five times greater death rate. But we have certainly seen a significantly higher death rate in particularly in people in learning disabilities in residential care homes. I think that it's one of the issues that we obviously need to put into planning for any further future wave of Covid, unfortunately. It's, you know, something that we need to to highlight.
Okay, so so I mean, I mean, that that do you want to respond to that, Matt, or just no?
Noted, Chair, and again, we can include that in our ongoing analysis that we bring back to the to the board.
Okay, I'll go then to Barry and then David after that. And then we're on this particular item because we've got a long way to go yet. I want to get through. So so Barry?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mayor, just quickly. And just anecdotally, through my daughter, a lot of the, a lot of the friends who are in the areas where there was spike in South Liverpool got them from parties that were in using apartments in the city centre. Some of them were young people under eighteen as well, where there's been quite a number of parties have been happening regularly. And I think in the hotels and just whether what we can do to to monitor, clamp down on that, first question. Second one was, um, I think there's a real problem, particularly with people probably under thirty, who have just got complete disinformation around um, around Covid and its seriousness and the impact and um, how it can be caught on heart. I know it's difficult, but just what thought there are and what we can do in terms of trying to get out the proper messaging to challenge that.
Yeah, Matt?
Chair, I mean, I I agree that communication is essential through all of this. And we have a very strong communications strategy locally. We are working on multi-platforms to try and get those that information out to different audiences, to different parts of our communities. But it is an ongoing challenge and I don't think it's something that's going to stop anytime soon, frankly. Specifically in relation to businesses, we are we are working with our businesses as well and highlighting uh, best practice and national guidance that they need to be following. But this this needs not be about enforcement in the first instance. This needs to be about winning hearts and minds in our communities and our business sector so that people understand that we are living with Covid and that people need to behave responsibly in order that we can kind of get life back to as much to normal as possible whilst mitigating for some of those risks around Covid that still exist.
Okay, so um, I'm going to then, thanks for that. I'm going to go to David Taylor-Robinson. So, David?
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Just to back up what Matt was saying about the the key to recovery being about investment in in health and and social care. And just to highlight some of the work that we've been doing in the university, which has been about trying to understand how inequalities in deaths related to Covid have been generated. So we we know that the virus has tracked down pre-existing social fault lines and areas where there's been disinvestment in health and social care. Are unsurprisingly the areas where we've we've seen high death rates. So it's incredibly important to look at this as this develops. There's also this intersection between ethnic inequalities and socio-economic inequalities. And we know that addressing poverty and all the things that we'll come to at the end around the Marmot Principles are are more important than ever. Those principles should be the guiding principles for thinking about recovery. With that in mind, in the university, we've developed this small area vulnerability index, which has looked at comorbidities, things like poverty, uh, density of care homes in local areas. So we've mapped areas that are likely to be disproportionately affected by a second wave. And that's available for the whole country. And we've shared that with Matt. You can look at that online. And and you can see the areas in Liverpool, which one would expect to be affected, are are likely to be harder hit and and we can prepare for that. But it's about sticking to these principles around that we know already about how to address both social and ethnic inequalities in health outcomes. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that, David. I I'm trying to now see if there was anybody else who had their hands up, but but look, forgive me if um, if if we've missed you because I can't see any any more hands up. Um, because I don't know whether those hands were from previous ones. So if you can please, uh, when you have spoken, um, let's let's move on to um, the recommendations there within that epidemiology report. Uh, so can we agree those recommendations are set out within that report? And and I think unless I hear uh, anybody against or or saying uh, anything, we'll accept that that's agreed. Um, and we move on to B, of the same impact Covid nineteen report. But it's the impact on children and young people and their families. Um, and again, that's the same report, but it's pages thirteen to twenty-four uh, on that. So I'm going to invite Melissa. Um, Melissa Campbell from Public Health to speak to this. Uh, and then we'll see if there is any questions after that. So, Melissa?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Anderson. Um, the report that I'm bringing here today is a report that summarizes the direct and the likely cumulative impact that we're going to see from Covid on children, young people and their families in Liverpool. Um, it's a report that I've held the pen on, but it's something that I've written in conjunction with partners from across the city in order to reflect some of the challenges that we will see going forward for children and young people. If a number of steps aren't taken to try and remediate some other impacts. The report is set out in three sections to demonstrate the differential impact that we're seeing on children and young people as a result of Covid. First of all, it highlights the direct impact and it and it shows, and although we're seeing slight changes in the epidemiology recently, it shows that across the entire lockdown period, the proportional prevalence, so the amount of disease that we've seen in diagnosis for children and young people has been relatively low compared to the older populations. And in Liverpool, that's been about two percent and nationally, that compares to one to five percent. We've seen, although we would obviously not want to see any deaths in children as a result of this, we would be classified compared to other the other related matters for children in terms of risk of morbidity. We've seen that death has been considered to be rare, acts consistently at naught point naught one percent nationally, which is equivocal to seasonal flu. So the direct impact that we're seeing on children and young people relative to all the life stages in our population is relatively low. Further on in the report, it highlights where we're going to see the real impact on children and young people. The indirect impact is the first stage. And this highlights within various sections the extent to which we have seen impact on children and young people immediately as a consequence of lockdown. And I'll just add in here the necessary consequence of lockdown and changes to services in order to stem the spread of virus. But nonetheless, important for us to recognize that this has had a disproportionate impact on our children and young people immediately. And that actually, some of the areas that are highlighted in this report emphasize that if steps aren't put into place to try and catch up or to emphasize delivery going forward, what we will see is that we'll have a disproportionate on children throughout their life course and in as adults they become. We see in terms of the health services, that many of the services have had to have been curtailed or modify their service delivery, which has meant that some children have not received timely treatment or that the safeguarding matters have been left undetected, unfortunately, as a result of lack of contact. And this is something that we recognize in the city. And as a result of that, we're expecting to see a spike going forward in the number of cases detected as services fall into normality again. And we've seen this in other countries as a result of Covid. We'll see the impact on education. We already recognize this impact in education in terms of exacerbating the inequalities gap that we have already persistently struggled with and we're addressing in Liverpool. Um, but actually, this gap and the pause in education that many children will have will have experienced as a result of lockdown is going to be exacerbated. But yet beyond that, children who are even thriving in the school setting are reflecting back to us that they are struggling with their aspirations and hope, even though they're succeeding and they're delivering well in the educational setting. I think we all recognize that school is more than just educational attainment, but the pastoral elements that children have not been able to receive as a result of uh, of a result of schooling will have its own impact on children. And we are seeing that already in terms of levels of mental health. And we're seeing this in terms of children who have existing mental health conditions who are have been limited in how they've been able to receive that risk report and treatment as a result of lockdown. But also children that had no previous diagnosis are reporting higher levels of anxiety and poorer well-being. And we know that when that's sustained for a long period of time, what we tend to see is that people then are at greater risk of developing a mental health diagnosis further on. Finally, the report indicates the impact of the economic downturn in the city and highlights the fact that this has disproportionately impacted on our young people in the city. And this, in turn, has an impact on children leaving education now when they look at their prospects and the and the job market. In terms of the economic downturn, we know that our young people were more likely to be furloughed. And we know that they are now more likely to be out of work as a result of of businesses struggling through Covid than 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 people from other age groups in the population. Finally, the inequalities impact that it emphasizes in the report is a cumulative impact for everything that we've just described. But it's really important for us to recognize this in Liverpool. There was a piece of work done by the Liverpool City Region that looked at showing the lack of productivity that we see in our economy as a result of of health and the inequalities gap, and it was about thirty percent. We were already working to address this in Liverpool. And what we have here in inequalities is the origin right in childhood. If we don't address the inequalities in childhood, we will see that increase when they become young people and adults in our in our community. The recommendations in this report are sixteen and they aren't the 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 limit of it. There are sixteen basic recommendations made to try and address some of these issues. And they cover in a bit more detail, three basic principles. And they cover the principles highlighted in the Dune North report that showed us how we address some of these inequalities that we've experiencing and we are emphasized, that has been emphasized as a result of Covid. It tells us that actually we need to engage with our young people in our communities. Liverpool now more than ever needs to become a child-friendly city and to hold that high in its esteem. We need to talk to our communities to really understand the challenges that they face as a result of Covid and the challenges they are going to continue to face as a result of recovery from Covid. And that needs to be integral to our recovery plans going forward. We need to strengthen our accountability to children. And that's not just services that deliver to children. We need to start recognizing that actually many of the impacts we're seeing in our children and young people are resultant from the families that they're growing up in and the adults that are their primary carers. So we need to start looking for the child behind the adult. And we need to start recognizing the inequalities impact in terms of the the um, or we need to continue, pardon me, to recognize the inequalities impact. And we need to be looking at investing more heavily in early years because we know that that's where they originate from. And we need to look to be ensuring people have a decent living wage in their households. Um, and we need to engage our communities in delivering this. So I brought this report for acknowledgement of its content and support of the recommendations, please, Mayor.
Okay, well, I I think first and foremost, Melissa, it's that we uh, thank you for the presentation and also uh, thank you for the report. I think the recommendations in it, uh, there is absolutely nothing that I uh, disagree with. Um, you know, clearly, there are serious challenges facing uh, our city in tackling the inequalities. We know more than any uh, city about the inequalities of poverty and um, and and the impact that has. And on top of that, we've got Covid, but we've also got uh, the financial consequences of Covid as well in terms of uh, you know, unemployment, families being unemployed, um, the number of parents furloughed at the minute and what impact that has uh, mental health. A whole plethora of different challenges that that many families and many young people are going to face. And I think, you know, um, I I one of the recommendations in particular recommend uh, about transforming education and not just restarting. I think that is absolutely uh, the mantra for me. Um, you know, yes, we can argue and we will and we are. And we're going to tackle uh, some of the financial inequalities that we face as a city in education. We are going to have to do that. And it is no doubt that there is a clear correlation between poor performance and lack of coming into the education system. But that doesn't mean to say that we can't do things differently. And we need to do things differently. And we need to innovate and we need to challenge and we need to be ambitious in what we do, especially uh, for the most disadvantaged young people. So I I I think the recommendations are fine. I I'd like the report. I think the things that it says within there off by. So I'm going to take any any questions. We're getting a bit of feedback. Uh, I I think, though, Melissa, I don't know whether that's on me or you. But I think a bit of a feedback. I don't know whether anyone else was picking that up. But I'm going to invite it quickly open to questions. But I'm going to invite quickly open to questions because the report is fornoting and agreeing to those recommendations. So I've got people with their hands up, but again, my system, it did before, but it's gone up. I've got some here. Peter, so either Richard or Jane wants to speak.
Right. So my question, in a way, is more to Barry. The report talks about the uncertainty for all our children, and the huge amount of uncertainty at the moment is about reopening in September. Now, I'm sure Liverpool is going to take a much more intelligent position on a school by school by school basis than the government wants to do with a blanket retail on first of September or whatever day. But we're reaching a time now where parents are coming off furlough, employers are trying to put pressure on, and in a couple of weeks, parents will need to know, school by school by school, what the plans they've got to make if their kids can't go back fully or part-time or one day a week or whatever. So just what are we trying to do as a council to work with the schools to get the appropriate information out so that parents can make that choice?
Okay, well, Barry, do you want to make a comment on that? Richard said that that question was to you. I'm happy to answer what he said. Do you want to make any comments, Barry?
I think it's probably better for you to answer because obviously, education is Barbara's brief book.
Yeah. Well, I think what I would say, Richard, is that Steve, who's not able to join us today, we are very, very mindful of the fact that what you've just pointed out about parents and furlough ending and all of those things, and they want some certainty about what's happening in September. And we are very, very urgently working with our schools, with the Head Teachers Association, secondly and primarily, to make sure that we've got those risk assessments and they get the support that they need from us to provide the space that is needed. So, you know, things may well change from the government in relation over the next four weeks left, five weeks left of the summer holidays in relation to social distancing and all of those things, and we're going to have to be mindful of that. But what is absolutely clear is that our teams led by Steve and the work that Barbara is also doing is helping schools to prepare because we will not be as, you know, in the past, you know, bullied by the government to tell us that we should be, you know, forcing kids into schools when it's not safe. We are desperately working to make sure that they are, but I'm conscious of the points you raise about letting parents know. So I would hope that, you know, certainly with, you know, a week, ten days in advance of the start of term, we're able to make it clear on what the position is of every school within the city in relation to opening up, when it's opening up, to give that clarity and certainty to parents, Richard. Okay, so Peter, I don't know whether Jane also wanted to make comment because you've got the hand up.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of ones. I welcome the report. I think it's really, it's really well put together and covers all the ground, really. In terms of number five, the inequalities gap about relative poverty, including from BAME households, I welcome that particularly, and also the transforming education, Mayor, just the issue about digital access there for household internet is really important and devices at home. But I'd like to just say about the number nine, in terms of if the minimum wage for eighties to twenty-year-olds is only six pound forty-five an hour, and Melissa mentioned quite rightly about real living wage, and I wonder whether we shouldn't think as a city of promoting grants that are conditional on businesses and paying the real living wage across the piece rather than people being discriminated against because of their age, and also tying that in with some positive action as well. And then just finally, the children's centers, the proportionate universalism that we use for embed with across the children's centers is really important, and I welcome that as well. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, on the point of the living wage and stuff, of course, and, you know, we, I don't think provide any grant support or funding to any organizations that pay the living wage, and I think we'll continue to make sure that that is the case, and we'll do that alongside the city region as well. On the, I don't know whether there's any interference from people, as long as you can hear me, with regards to obviously, digital connectivity and stuff for the poorest, most disadvantaged kids, that is something that me and the chief executive have been talking about and we're looking about, you know, what we can sort of put into the midterm financial plan to see if there's any support and funding that we can try to get into help education because we're clear, as I mentioned in my comments, about disadvantaged young people, the decline in standards linked to poverty and, you know, the pupil premium as well as it being as good as it was and stuff, whatever, is nowhere near keeping us ahead of the challenges that we face with poverty. So, you know, we've got to do something in addition, and in my role on the combined authorities, we've pushed. Can I ask everybody to mute themselves as well, just so that we can, because it's a lot of background noise there, it's difficult for me to talk over. So we are looking at trying to provide as much resource. So the chief executive is working with me to look at how we do that, but I'm also working with the CA to look at what we can bring in from some trusts that we're having engagement with as well, to see if we can get some funding and resources in to help us, because there's not just a problem in Liverpool, it is across the city region as well. So, but as I said, I think, Melissa, as Jane said, that was a good report, good presentation, and I certainly like the recommendations. I've got a number of other people with the hands up. I've got Paul and then Barry, and then I'm going to call it quits and move on to the next one. Paul, quickly. Oh, Jan Ledwood as well, Janet indicated as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to put on record my appreciation for the work that all the public health team have done across the piece, but in particular to Melissa, because I know there's an awful lot of additional work that's gone on over COVID and targeted towards supporting our children and young people. I want to put on record my thanks to her personally for all the work she's done. That was all, Jeff.
Okay, thanks for that. But Barry, we're talking about the 2,000 computers that the government put passports to us. Is there anything else you wanted to add on that?
No, I was just going to just say just a couple of comments from the report.
Okay.
Just briefly. Okay, I think just, obviously, it's just, you know, the reports, Melissa said highlights issues there already with young people, and we don't know quite what the impact is going to be yet, although we are anticipating it. But there are some good things that I think we need to build on from it. I think the, you know, the partnership working and that relationship, I think, between schools and vulnerable children and the children's centers and early help and other teams, I think is something that we, you know, that we need to, you know, we need to build on moving forward. And I think, I think there's issues around, clearly as well, around S and D and transition for children because of what, because of the situation they've had. And I think the other thing is probably closer, working with adults around those elements of where children and adults, families have got issues with parents' mental health or substance misuse, that domestic abuse that's clearly having an impact on children that I think we need to, that we also need to build on, just those sort of general points, really.
Okay, thank you for those comments, Barry, then. I think I've got Jan, Jan Ledwood.
Thanks, Jo. It was really just to say we support the recommendations, and just the one on strengthening accountability, I think we should think about, now we've got the city plan and one Liverpool, I think we need to think about the governance that is needed and required to support that. So whilst I agree we need to strengthen the accountability, I don't necessarily agree with going back and setting up more boards without, and so I've done that, more broader piece of work.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point, isn't it? And I think you're absolutely right. And I, as I said, this is a priority for me. The chief executive who's on gets that, he agrees with me, you know, we can't talk about, you know, tackling inequality without talking about the inequality in education and stuff and how we do that. So him and the education director and the financial director, we are working together to look at what we can do, but working with others. So I think, Jan, it's a point well made, and we'll take that on board as well. Okay, I think I've then got David, David Taylor Robertson. David, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I strongly endorse what Melissa's put in the report. Just on the children's centers, investment in Liverpool went down from fourteen million in 2010 to six and a half million at the moment. And we know, it's not, lots of these problems occur in the early years before children end up in school. It's about increasing investment across the life course. We know that child poverty is going to go up from about four point three million kids in this country to over five million. In the absence of us being able to do lots about that locally, we need to provide services that protect children from poverty, and those early years services are absolutely essential and cost effective, and we can provide the evidence that shows that.
No, absolutely. I think that, I think we'd all agree with that, David. And there's no question, absolutely no question that, you know, when, I often make this point and people look at me as if, you know, I'm from a different planet, but if you go back to 2010 and you look at the funding that we had coming into education that tackled disadvantaged educational, you know, inequality through excellence in cities, the education action zones program, the mentoring programs, the funding and support for kids with special needs, all of those funded streams were there and, you know, helped transform, and of course, Sure Start and all of those things. That's why you're absolutely right about the cut in Sure Start and stuff, but at least we've tried to keep all of ours open and we'll continue to do that. And I'm hopeful that we might be able to, you know, get some more funding to address this issue because it clearly is a funding issue. Yes, there are other things that we can do. Yes, there are changes that we need to make, but picking up again and starting to drag our young people back up to the levels that they were pre-2010 is going to cost us money, but that's what we've got to do. Okay, so look, let's agree the recommendations then, if, I think, don't think anybody would disagree. If you do, please speak out. If I don't hear anything in five seconds, well, I'll say that you've agreed. Okay? Okay, so we've agreed the recommendations are set out in that. And then the next is the rapid evidence review, and this is on page twenty-five, and basically it's a sixty-four, and it just looks at the health and equity in recovery plans and the working group and the review on this. Again, Matt, if you just want to speak to this, and if you can, I think it's a good report, it highlights the issues of concern, it's informative, and I think it's, it's actually, there's a couple of recommendations there, but it's fornoting. Matt, do you want to take us through this, the rapid evidence review?
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I will do this one briefly. I think this is a very good, strong, comprehensive report, and actually, the way this report was developed was through a really strong partnership working in the city, particularly between the city council, Liverpool John Moores University and Liverpool University. So I'd like to thank both the universities for their support in developing this very strong report. The purpose of this report is to outline via an evidence review, so based on existing information, what the likely impacts of COVID are going to be on our population, both direct and indirect, and trying to unpick the inequalities angle of it. There is an executive summary, which I think is really, really easy to read, and I will pick up a few key points from that right now. But the point of the report is to influence our recovery plans, our mitigation plans, not just the councils, but our partnership plans to kind of to improve the health and wellbeing of our population, to help us not get over, but respond and recover from COVID, and to build the city back into the fantastic place that it needs to be going forward. And a couple of the specific issues and some of which have already been talked about already from the executive summary, so we know there are both positive and negative impacts on social and community networks. So some evidence of increased civic participation, for example, loads of new volunteering groups, people being more, working together, being friendlier, being kinder in their communities. However, there is a flip side of that, and we know that there is still issues of social isolation and loneliness affecting many parts of our community, and serious concern around mental health and about vulnerable adults and childrens and how they are able, how they have been able to cope during lockdown and beyond. Impact on money and resources, particularly economic impact as a result of social distancing and lockdown, that's seen an increase in people signing up for universal credit and job seekers allowance. Impact on education and kids, and some of this has been talked about already, but various standards of emerging evidence to suggest children and young people may be hit hardest by social distancing and lockdown measures, including exacerbating existing inequalities around educational attainment. Impact on our surroundings, so people spend much more time at home during lockdown, which has impacted when people have got worse quality housing, it makes those impacts worse. And we know that around twelve percent of the population has no access to private or shared gardens. So there's issues around how people access public space and take advantage of that. Impact on transport, which we know around, kind of falls in use of public transport, falls initially in private car journeys, and opportunities to change the way we move about in the future. Impact on food, particularly around food insecurity and food need, particularly around children, but also vulnerable adults, and how people get hold of the food, of healthy food that they need. Access to health and social care, we know the impact on the NHS of COVID and the fact that a lot of services were stepped down and are now being stepped back up again, but there's been an impact as a result of that. Impacts on individual health behaviors and actually potentially a mix back there as well, with people drinking more, but more opportunities for people to stop smoking. So, you know, some good and some bad within there. And then a particular issue around mental health and wellbeing, which we know is a particular priority for us as a city, and much work needed to do to mitigate the impact on population level, mental health and wellbeing, and also mental health and wellbeing in some of our specific hardest-hit communities. The conclusion of the report now is that the impacts of COVID-19 are widespread. There has been both positive and negative, but the impacts have not been felt equally. So there have been impacts that have been bigger in our most disadvantaged communities. And I think really, the pandemic has exposed those inequalities much more publicly, perhaps in a way that hasn't been done before, and this report therefore recommends us, well, it suggests that there are actions needed to address those impacts in order that we can actually finally address the health and wellbeing issues that we have in the city and across the rest of the country. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, well, thanks for that report, Matt. We're keeping you busy. And any questions or comments on that? I can't see any hands up on that one. So can I just accept the, we agreed the recommendations set out within that report is usually important as it is, and I think it's a pretty comprehensive report and well put together, Matt. So can we agree the recommendations are set out in the report, please? Okay, so now we move on to item D, which is the inequalities on BAME communities. And okay, we've discussed a little bit of it, but can I invite Paul, Councilor Paul Brandt, to speak to this, please? Paul?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Clearly, one of the early invisible signs of the way in which COVID has affected society was the very large number of people from a BAME community across the country who were disproportionately affected by the direct impacts of COVID, and very sadly, also some of the mortality figures that we've seen. I'm glad that Public Health England conducted an early review of the impact on minority communities, but clearly, it was only the very first step in a series of reviews and analysis that needs to take place. You've got early indications from Tracy Gore about the need for proper data, and this is undoubtedly the case, and we're working with our partners to make sure that is the case. We know that BAME communities are disproportionately reflected in frontline health and social care roles. We know that BAME communities are disproportionately reflected in frontline health and social roles and also may have representation in some of the comorbidities that affect COVID-19, this impact on the individuals. It's very important that we make sure that our Liverpool BAME community is properly protected insofar as we can as a local authority. And a key part in making that happen is to carry out the analysis, both epidemiological and scientific, that our public health team are leading in collaboration with the NHS and also our partners at the university. So I think this is a very timely report, very welcome. It's an indication of the seriousness with which the City Council treats this particular issue. And we look forward to reporting back in due course. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thanks for that, Paul. So I'm happy to take any questions on this now. So if anybody's got any, any comments? Peter, I know there's somebody with you. Let me take a guess, Richard?
Oh, Jane. Thanks, Mayor. And number two in the recommendations, I really welcome that. So the supporting community participatory research, so that people's voices are heard and they're also involved in the actual research themselves and within the BAME communities, that's really crucial. So thanks, Melissa, for highlighting that, that's really important.
Okay, thanks, Jane. I can't see any of the hands up. Okay, so I can't, has anybody else got any comments to make? If you do speak, I can't see any hands up. Okay, well, okay, we'll move on then to, because I can't see any, we'll move on to. Well, let's first just agree those recommendations and note the recommendations of the Public Health England report anyway. So can we do that, please? I take it nobody's disagreeing, so we shall accept those recommendations. So item six then is the summary of the recovery plan. And basically it's on pages 74 to 78. So Martin, I'm going to ask you to give a comment on this.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, that's absolutely fine, Mayor. Just to say at the beginning, I think the report mainly focuses on some of the issues that we're dealing with within the council. But I'd highlight that the recovery planning is very much on a partnership approach, both across Merseyside, but also with our health colleagues in terms of the work that they're doing, particularly in the out of hospital cell. So there is a Merseyside Recovery Group. There is also a strategic recovery group within the council. And then with underneath the Merseyside group, there is a series of different themed groups that are looking at recovery. So for instance, there's one on health and social care. The tactical recovery group, I think, just mirrors maybe a lot of the core issues, which certainly around business and economy impacts, the culture and tourism, education, which we've already touched on, health and social care, finance and so on. So I think the health, just to go back to health and social care, which is probably the most pertinent to this group, is that we are, as I've already mentioned, we are working very closely with our health colleagues. And there is a health and social care recovery group within Liverpool, which is a multi-agency group. And that also links to both an adult social care subgroup and to the out of hospitals group, which is chaired through NHS colleagues and has a range of agencies involved, certainly myself linking in for adult social care. The plan also links to the city plan and therefore One Liverpool as our health and wellbeing strategy. The focus in many ways has been on effectively responding, but also I think now is focusing more on the recovery elements, but also coordinating the resources across agencies. So what's the learning? And I think planning for this, what we unfortunately are anticipating could be a second wave for later in the year. But again, what support can we put through into things like the culture and tourism sector, the community sector itself and community services and children and young people, particularly getting them back into education?
Okay, thank you for that, Martin, and for those comments. I think the main thing is for us to note things, but I'm going to bring in our chief executive, Tony. Do you want to make some comments on this?
Yeah, if I can, Joe. One of my roles, I chair the Merseyside Recovery Group, which is part of the, part of the Merseyside Resilience Forum response to COVID. And one of the things that we're now really clear about is Martin touched on the risks of a second spike and the resilience of the whole recovery process that we've got in place across the city and the wider parts of Merseyside. So over the next few weeks, we will be carrying out a whole series of desktop exercises to test the resilience and make sure we've got mitigations in place against the risks. Because the worst thing in the world is a second spike blows us off course, has even more devastating impacts on the economy, particularly with the risks around Brexit, et cetera, potentially coming hot on the heels of that in the winter. And of course, our own resilience in terms of the funding challenges that many parts of the public sector are facing as a result of the crisis. So rather than just assuming everything's going to be okay, we're doing a lot of work on really testing our resilience to maintain the recovery through what might be quite a difficult autumn and winter. And we're working closely with partners right across the board to make sure that we cover that ground as much as we possibly can.
Okay, Richard?
I'd like to follow, coincidentally, from what the chief executive has just said. As I looked at this report and looked at the other ones, it's quite clear that more people are going to be unemployed, more families are going to be under stress, there's going to be less money in people's pockets to go out and enjoy themselves. All sorts of things that we can predict. But as you've continually said, we're going to be at least £50 million adrift. And where are those cuts going to have to go? They're going to have to go on the non-statutory things, the libraries, the parks, the community centres, the small grants that we make, which can most cost effectively deal with some of those problems. So I was wondering from the chief executive whether we're working in partnership with our health service partners here to look at things like social prescribing and how relatively small amounts put into our services to save them, the parks, the libraries, the things I've mentioned before, would actually have huge health benefits or huge savings in the health budget if those things disappear. And if we are making that case with the NHS and the voluntary sector, is that going to be part of our bid to the government for the sort of second stage of the recovery programme? The one that's gone in looks at the economy and it's quite right, we should start the economy. Is there a second stage going in to look at this effective use of local money?
Tony, do you want to, do you want to respond to that?
Just very briefly, Mayor, we have an item on the agenda a bit later about the city plan and the One Liverpool plan, how the two fit together. And not just looking directly at the health issues, but the wider determinants of health and how we align all of the resources and all of the capability in Liverpool against a single set of objectives, which is about wellbeing outcomes and of course empowering people to take control of their own lives. So I think that those points are very, they're valid points, but they're absolutely what the city plan and specifically for this board, the One Liverpool plan are all about.
And just to say, Richard, we clearly, you know, we'll talk about the city plan, the One Liverpool plan. We'll talk about that in a minute. But, you know, I will make sure that you are kept informed with the other leaders around the financial situation. But clearly, you know, the partnership approach that we have been utilising with the health service, with our partners elsewhere is going to be desperately needed moving forward, that's for sure. But we'll keep you abreast of, you know, the financial situation as we submit the, you know, the details of our spending to government and see what we get. And I think when we meet next week, we'll give you an update on where we are with that. Because it's not just about this year for us and it is absolutely, you know, frightening for me when I look at the situation and, you know, what we've done every single year. You know, cutting, you know, 10% out of a billion pound, it isn't bad. But cutting 10% out of 350 million, it is a lot worse. And, you know, we're in a position where next year, 21, 22, we know already that with the loss of businesses that we know will happen, that the loss of businesses that will cease to exist. And of course, the council tax also, people moving to housing benefits and people claiming benefits, including discretionary housing fund, is going to probably impact us to the tune of around about 50 million. So we'll be 50 million less worse off next year. Whatever it else is the government throw at us in the spending review and with the rates of pork grants at the end of the year. So, you know, we'll keep you in touch, as we will the whole council and the city in regards to that, Richard. Okay, Martin, you want to speak on this or you?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, Mayor, that I think what it has done is helped us to galvanise what we were already seeking to do under the city plan and the One Liverpool. And I think bringing those partnerships to also reflect a little bit in terms of through, certainly through the Communities Recovery Group, through the Health and Social Care Recovery Group. I think it's actually a reset and recovery group. So it's how do we actually look at, are some of the things that we were doing, are there different ways they could be done? Could we utilise some of the assets that we've got? And I think certainly, I know in the past, to speak to councillor Kemp about, he's been very positive about how could we encourage greater activity and use of parks as an example. These, I think there's opportunities for us to do a bit of reset and rethink around some of it with our partners. So I just wanted to sort of reinforce that, you know, that whilst there's a lot of negatives that have come out of it, there are some opportunities at the same time.
Okay, that's fair comment and thanks for that. Okay, so can we accept the recommendations? But the main one is for us to note the work that's been undertaken within the report. So can we agree that recommendation, please? Okay, so if we then move on to item seven, which is the outbreak control plan. And it says on page 79 to 101, we're moving towards two o'clock. I was hoping to try and see if we could get finished for you by that, but we'll have to continue because there's plenty more on the agenda. But the outbreak control plan, Matt, can I ask you to make comments to this report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, so in June, we were asked to develop a local outbreak control plan to respond. And that plan details how we respond to community outbreaks of COVID-19. We published that interim outbreak plan on the 30th of June and undertook a two-week consultation period where we took comments to improve the quality of that plan. And this plan is coming today to the Health and Wellbeing Board for approval. The key elements of it are the plan, details how we will respond to community outbreaks and also details the governance arrangements that are set up around that. So one of the recommendations is the establishment of a subcommittee under the Health and Wellbeing Board to oversee the implementation of the outbreak control plan. That's called the Health Protection Board. So the Health Protection Board set up and meeting monthly and reporting into the Health and Wellbeing Board. We also therefore bring updates on the outbreak control plan to yourselves as Health and Wellbeing Board members. And we have a monthly political engagement session as well. So we have more timely ways of feeding that information. And all the information is in the plan itself. The plan is not a static document. We will continue to develop it as we learn from what happens in Liverpool, in Liverpool city region and across the rest of the country. So for example, taking learning from Leicester or from Blackburn or from some of the outbreaks in Wales, we will continue to improve the plan. And we have a worked up operational plan that is responding well, I believe. And if I can just give you a flavour of that, going back to an earlier issue. So we keep a very close eye on the data. When we see increases in levels of infections in a particular population or a particular cohort, our approach is to respond very actively, preventatively. For some of the reasons that we talked about in the early reports, we do not want to see a re-escalation of the virus. We do not want to see a second peak. So make no apologies actually, Mayor, for us responding very proactively in that space to try and contain the virus as quickly as we can do in our communities. And you'll have seen, or board members will have seen, we did that in South Liverpool on two occasions, deploying two testing sites and making board members aware today that as a result of an increase in cases that we've seen in the Princess Park ward of the city, we will also be putting in additional testing capability into the ward next week. Around that, we also have a very strong comms approach, multi-led. So both within our communities and using the normal, the usual comms approaches, which is to remind people of the public health messages, which I'd like to reiterate now if I may. And that is the usual things like hand hygiene, washing your hands, social distancing, so people keep their distance, using face coverings when they're not able to and when they're in certain settings, for example, on public transport, in shops, restaurants. And absolutely crucially, if people are not well, specifically with the symptoms of coronavirus, that is a new continuous cough, a fever or a lot of sense of taste or smell, then people need to stay home, self-isolate and get themselves tested. And if we all use those approaches, we will help contain the spread of the virus and that will allow us to maintain the health and wellbeing of the city and allow economic recovery in the city as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, Matt, thanks, thanks for that. I think the thing for me, I think the plan is good and I think the subcommittee is good because it means, you know, we've got immediate response and we can always feedback to the Health and Wellbeing Board either through myself anyway, who's kept informed when we need to deal with an outbreak. I just want to make this comment as well. And I think it's important that we look at how we deal with this. And I think it is, you know, when we look at an outbreak in the antecedents, when we look at the, you know, it's usually because what we've seen so far, not in any way making any comments about Princess Park or whatever at the minute, but Walton and Bellevale and stuff. We've seen that around, you know, people's behaviour and stuff. And I'm concerned that, you know, we have got a situation where masks are not being, you know, used in the way that we would hope, in terms of a lot of people are ignoring the recommendations about, you know, in shops and public transport. And I think, you know, we've got to work with our other partners, in particular Merseyside Police and others, to make sure that, and with the retailers and stuff, to actually make sure that we try to hammer home that message. You know, public transport, it's where nearly people seem to think that, you know, they do what they want. And bus drivers and public transport workers don't feel it's up to them to try to enforce that. Equally, I think it's similar, I'm hearing, you know, a lot of anecdotal evidence and comments made to me about that, that's similar in shops. And I think, you know, we have to try to get a message across, no mask, you know, then no service if you're entering into the shops. And we've got to try to enforce that. And I just wondered what, you know, what everybody's thoughts are on that in relation to how we enforce it. Because I think it's absolutely important to not only help deal with the containment, but also to continue to send that message if people are wearing masks and stuff, whatever, that this hasn't gone away. You know, it's still very much out there. So I just wonder what your thoughts are on that. Matt, that was a question for you, I think, one that, did you pick my comments about what your thoughts are on that?
Apologies, Mayor. No, I completely agree. We need to be encouraging the use of face coverings on a much wider basis. I think the thing to note is obviously it is a big change for us as a society. It is not something we are used to, so I'm not surprised it's taking some time to bed in. I think we need to get better and smarter with our comms around the reasons for us using face coverings and moving it to more, much more being a position of being a social norm, that people wear face coverings in the same way as perhaps people have to use seat belts. that people wear face coverings in the same way as perhaps people have to use seatbelts rather than something that is unusual. So I think that's a collective ask of all of us to both demonstrate that commitment to using face coverings and encouraging, actively encouraging others to do. Enforcement is a difficult area, Mayor, as well, you know. And so I think we need to kind of grow the movement of people wanting and needing to wear face coverings in public wherever possible.
Okay, okay, well, we need to, we need to get comms working on that as well. Because I think it is a mixture of communication, but also enforcement as well. Because people are, you know, feeling they're immune to this and don't need to follow the rules. Okay, let's then, you know, accept the outbreak control plan. I think it's, as I said, it's got the things in it that we need to hear. And I think it's already shown in what you've done, Matt. And I commend you for that and the response and the speed in which we've acted to particular flare-ups that we've had. Let's update, you know, don't increase. But I think we can, I think personally, be confident that we can respond in the way that we need to when it's required to do so. So thank you for that. If there's no further questions, can we agree those recommendations are set out in that report? Nobody indicating no. So move on to item eight, which is the Marmot Principles. And Jane, you wanted to just speak to this 10 years on from Marmot. So I invite you to make any comments on that short report, yeah?
Yeah, thank you. This is so important, it's untrue. A lot of us have been pushing for the Marmot Principles to be really embedded within everything that we do in the council, but also across the city for a very long time now. So it's, so I welcome all the recommendations that have been put through there. And I think there's also just to note that the Marmot Principles also are embedded already in the Fair City policy that we adopted a couple of years ago now in the council. And the link with the inclusive growth plan. So that then moves through to the City Plan. I think the point about the, if you look at the background 3.1, you've got the six key principles, that's six key actions, but you've also got the seventh, which is a recognition that the local government, this is what Marmot said, local government is a key pivotal partner in addressing social determinants of health. So I think we need to keep that front and centre as well. And I think in terms of using the Marmot Principles and those six actions and the council's role within that as the link and connecting point for the rest of the city. And if we use that really well in terms of having it as a framework and we check things against it. So if you go back to what David Taylor Robinson said before about children, giving every child the best chance in life is there. So we look at what we're actually doing against that. And enabling children, young people and adults to maximize their capabilities and have control over their lives. The control bit is really important because otherwise people are suffering chronic stress because they haven't got that control. And that is very, very detrimental on long-term health. Fair employment and good work, that goes straight back to our discussions we had around real living wage and no inappropriate use of zero hours contracts, decent terms and conditions in work during progression, the use of blueprint principles around purpose-driven business rather than profit-driven business. And then over the page, you've got ensuring a healthy standard, living for all. And that is particularly crucial around food because that is such a key indicator and very, very sensitive on the ground. A bit like sadly infant mortality is very sensitive on the ground for public health. When food insecurity increases, impacts of very poor policymaking by government. And then strengthening and creating and developing healthy and sustainable places and communities goes back to what councillor Kemp was saying before about the green spaces. It also links directly, Mayor, with our new housing strategy, transport, all of that. And then just finally to say 3.2.4, to recognize the significant cuts to local authority, although all the parties signed up to the Marmot Health Fest Society Healthy Lives Report in 2010, which included proportionate universalism, so universal support across the piece, but stacked up where it's greatest, where it's needed the greatest. Of course, the government did completely the opposite of that and cut where the need was greatest. And so I think I really welcome this and can't underestimate the impact that that could have. And also joining up with other people outside of the city into the region and beyond.
Okay, well, I mean, I personally, you know, agree with everything that you've just said, Jane. And I think everybody in the meeting fully supports your comments. And the reality is, is that, you know, we've discussed inequality and equality of opportunity. And, you know, I did an interview the other day with a guy called Paul Johnson, who's from the Institute of Fiscal Studies for Radio 4. And, you know, sad fact of life since 2010, you know, the poorest authorities have got poorer. And as a consequence of that, you know, the people who live within those authorities have also suffered. So, you know, it's crucial that we, in what we do, try to mitigate the impact of funded reductions in the best way we can. And that includes, you know, the living wage, job opportunities, tackling health inequalities, tackling education inequalities, housing, all of those things that Marmot mentioned 10 years ago were still as important today as they were 10 years ago. So I think, I think David Taylor Robinson wants to make a comment, David?
Thanks, Maronson. Thanks, Jen Corbett. I think the, I think people tend to forget because of the COVID pandemic that what was outlined in the Marmot Report was that life expectancy was going backwards in poor areas. And it's difficult to overstate the public health significance of that. Things like that just don't happen unless, as Marmot outlines in the report, something's going wrong within society. And it's now clear from the evidence that the cuts to local authority budgets contributed in a large way to life expectancy going backwards. And then we've had COVID and all of the ramifications of that on top of it. So I think the, as I said right at the start, the principles outlined in that Marmot Report are around proportionate universalism, thinking about what we can do locally to, because I think the levers locally are about raising funding and also where if cuts have to happen, thinking very carefully about the whole system. And as councillor Kemp pointed out, we know it, it's the, so parks definitely have an effect on health. All of these things affect health and it's, it needs careful thinking through. And you can't cut budgets for children without impacting things like their life chances and their health. And I think that's become clear. That was the point of the Marmot Report. We've been diverted by COVID, but I think it's more important than ever, these recommendations.
Yeah, I accept that, David. And of course, you know, without pointing out the blatantly obvious, a lot of the things in order to meet the aspirations of Marmot 10 years ago are very much the same as they are today. A lot of this can't be done without funding. In terms of, you know, the things that we can do, we are doing. And, you know, you touched on them before about, you know, the children's centres and but also, you know, everything that we do. But we've suffered as a consequence of funding cuts. And, you know, that's the point I just made here before about, you know, the sad reality of reductions in rate support grants and also the way this government have took away grant support, rate support grant, but also, you know, specific grants related to public health and other issues was impacted on the poorest areas with the highest levels of need in terms of to target those. So, you know, we'll continue to argue that case, we'll continue to work with the limited resources we've got. And we'll try to also secure and bring in more resources. Okay, so I think the recommendations within that and Jane's comments and David's comments, of course, we will continue to act on and respond to as best we can. So I think, can we agree the recommendations within that report? Nobody disagrees with that. So I think it links in as well to the City Plan and One Liverpool. So Tony and our chief executive, Jan Ledwig, are going to provide us with a verbal update on this. So can, Tony, can I ask you to start, please?
Yeah, just very briefly, Mayor, I'm conscious of time. There's nobody on this, in this meeting who hasn't been involved in some way in the development of the City Plan because it's been developed by the whole partnership. There's been extensive engagement with partners and presentations as we've been putting it together. It's now been signed off by the local strategic partnership and it's now coming to each individual organisation through their governance models for sign-offs. What we've done is also developed a first-year action plan for the City Plan. And particularly focused on COVID, a number of things to point out in that. One of the first actions is about accelerating the transformation of the health and care system. Obviously, that was paused during COVID, but all partners are really determined to take forward that agenda now at pace. Improving education, the education improvement plan and reinvigorating that, that works already well underway. I think everybody knows about the work we've been doing on the economic recovery plan to take that forward and really reposition Liverpool's economy, given the things that we're facing. On the back of COVID, really reinvigorating the climate change action plan and building on the things that have changed during the crisis. A big focus on domestic violence, really, really pertinent given some of the challenges they've been locally and nationally on that. And at the heart of this, because at the heart of the whole City Plan is about empowering people to take control of their own lives. And I think Jane has just referred to the, to this sort of issue in her presentation. It's about accelerating the plan for people power. So a lot of engagement with people has gone on through the development of the plan and building the social capital for people to do more things and take more decisions in their own neighbourhoods. That's something we absolutely want to build on. And overarching this is the start of a dialogue with government to say we want a single set of outcome-based metrics agreed between Liverpool as a whole and government. At the moment, there are 14 sets of metrics by which the public sector are held to account by government that works against systemically focusing on those big outcomes that we need to transform the lives of the people of Liverpool. And as a partnership, there's a real sign-up to working systemically, aligning our resources and our capabilities to really focus on the right things. I say no more than that, Mayor, because I'll be repeating what we've talked about before and it's now coming forward for governance issues. I don't know if Jan wants to comment specifically on the One Liverpool element.
Yeah, Jan?
Yeah, thanks, Jo, and the support, Tony, in what we said. We've worked very closely across the partnership to make sure we've got a City Plan that we can all sign up to and support. In terms of One Liverpool, obviously, this was the second year of delivery of our One Liverpool strategy. It's had a bit of a side swipe, obviously, because of COVID in terms of what we set out to achieve this year. And some areas are probably more challenged than others than there were, you know, previous to COVID, particularly around mental health services. And I think we're going to see significant demand for a response in terms of COVID to our mental health, which could become overwhelming if we're not careful. There are things that we've managed to deliver throughout the COVID pandemic that were already part of the plan. So a significant shift towards supporting people who've got long-term conditions with remote monitoring and telemedicine to maintain their independence, but also to make sure that they're safe and have a rapid response to any decline in their condition. We're looking at how we can extend that further to other conditions so that we can maintain people more safely. And we've seen a big move towards people being dealt with remotely, which was always part of our strategy in terms of ensuring that we only bring people into hospital when they need to be in a hospital setting. And we need to do more of that and we need to move further faster in terms of the opportunities the digital revolution can offer us during this crisis. But we are significantly affected in terms of capacity now to treat people. And our waiting lists have obviously taken a significant knock in not being able to provide any elective treatment for a significant period of time. And as you are aware, people on waiting lists often decline whilst they're waiting. So the cases that we are now seeing are more urgent, obviously take longer to be dealt with and for people to recover and take longer in hospitals. So there is an increasing pressure now locally to manage those waiting lists appropriately. And we're working alongside NHS England and other organisations to manage that effectively for our local population. So really, we can bring back probably a more detailed update report at some stage, Jo, on things that we've done, have gone well and those things that we've now got significant challenges about. And I think, I think the Health and Wellbeing Board should be cited on some of the performance of our local system more closely going as we progress.
Okay, Jan, no, thanks for that and we look forward to that. But I mean, has anybody got any issues or any questions now for us in terms of on what we've just heard? As I said, this is winding its way around different organisations who are our partners and we want to share with them and get their endorsements and their comments. So that will happen and we will bring it back because clearly there will be some comments and stuff made. So if we have no comments and I can't see any there on, can I just note the updates that we've just had from Tony and Jan and agree that? Okay, so the schedule of dates for the remainder of the year are being drafted and of course will be circulated in due course. Obviously, we're going to monitor the situation in terms of whether we can have a sort of hybrid part, virtual part in the town hall, maybe with social distancing and stuff, we'll have a look at that. But I've asked people to hold on as well at the end, so just for an updated briefing. But that ends today's meeting. So can I thank you, everybody, for attending? And we'll speak to you all soon. As I said, once again, thank you for all your contribution in helping us through the difficulties that we faced with COVID. It's been really good. And I know there's lots of you who haven't spoke, but I mean, thank you to every single one of you that are here and also your organisations. Okay, so as I said, if you can stay on, Peter, that's the end officially of the meeting.
Thank you, Chair. Can I ask Niall if he can end the live stream, please? Ask my colleague Vicky, who's managing the live feed, just to make sure that that's gone off. And I'll confirm back to you in about 20 seconds because there's a delay on there.
Yeah, thank you. So just to let you know, everybody, we're just trying to end that live feed because Matt just wants to give us a presentation or a verbal update really on where we are with Princess Park. We just wait for the all-clear.
Niall, can you make sure this has gone off, please?